Is admitting.
You look like Armin. Are we staying?
Oh, yeah, I'm trying from where? What state?
Manhattan.
Oh, Manhattan, yeah.
Manhattan.
Yeah.
You're ready to go. That'll be a little brand of Austin. That'll be about two years ago.
Um, yeah. But you don't work up the option or?
The user.
Yeah.
All right, there we go.
There we go.
Perfect.
So Mike, I guess you'll still chair the meeting.
Yeah, we'll give that a whirl if for some reason there's weird delays and whatnot. Uh, I can hand it over to somebody in person. It looks like most of us are online anyway, so.
You know what? I think we'll tolerate any, you know, uh, unusual delays.
Something we do have to do differently is for each motion, we have to take a roll call because we're not all on the same side.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do a little bit of, uh, a little bit of instructions at the beginning. I think we're actually ready to start. Uh, Marty's giving me the thumbs up, so.
All right, well, then, we will go ahead and call this meeting of the Austin City Planning Commission to order. Um, thank you all for your flexibility in our new meeting format, uh, some in person and some online. The city council has modeled this well, so we know it can be done. Um, first up on the agenda.
Actually, Mike, before you get s-
I'm going to take a roll call.
Mike, before you get started, um, I just want to remind everybody that this, this meeting is still being videotaped and recorded. Um, we also, um, and I have allergies and I cough all the time, so that's why I'm going to wear the mask the whole time. But if you have trouble hearing me, just let me know. Um, and I can accommodate. I, there's probably enough space here, um, to do that. Um, and then if, uh, if you all could just note your appearance, I mean, granted, it is being recorded, but if you could just note, um, who's all here to, to just, uh, verify that we have a quorum. Uh, I'll start with Commissioner Lutz.
I'm here.
Yeah, here, I guess we have, um, I'll just, I'll just maybe note, you guys, uh, we have Mike Postma, or Commissioner Postma, Commissioner Swenson, Commissioner Burrows, Commissioner Caporal, and there's maybe one more that I'm missing. Is Commissioner Schrock here?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I think that's everybody. If I missed anyone, just chime in. Okay, and then we have, uh, one member of the public appearing via, uh, internet or Zoom, and, um, one of the petitioners, but, uh, he's the second matter on the agenda. And then we have a couple other people here in person from the public, um, who are also here for the second matter. Um, so now I'll let you take it away. Uh, Commissioner Postma, thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you for setting us up. Uh, so first up, we will have a review of the minutes, which we last met on March 10th. Those were emailed out. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I will take a motion to approve, and please state your name for Erica when you make motions.
So moved, Commissioner Lutz.
Rita Schrock.
Okay, in a second.
I will second Melissa Swenson.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Uh, Erica, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, just to be safe.
Yep.
Well, the question was, name. Swenson?
Yes.
Lutz?
Aye.
Um, Caporal?
Yes.
Postma?
Yes.
Schrock?
Yes.
Burrows?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. First up on our agenda for this month, we have a petitioner, um, requested action. The petitioner appeals the section code limiting fence constructed adjacent to corner lots. Um, they are looking to install a six-foot privacy fence in order to better protect their dogs from passersby and interaction with the public. The proposed fencing is a six-foot tall privacy fence located on a corner lot. Existing lot is ninety-five hundred square feet, which exceeds our minimum six thousand square foot. The proposed area is about five thousand square feet of back and side yard combined, sixty feet of which will remain within the two-and-a-half-foot setback. The petitioner's primary concern accommodating the setback is existing irrigation system. Holly, can you take us through this one?
Yeah, so this is in a single-family residential district, um, surrounded by all residential. Um, the petitioner, um, and his partner, um, as you explained, have dogs that have been, um, you know, have had some negative interactions with passersby. The majority of the property, or at least two sides, are bounded by sidewalk. So, um, and, and these are the kind of neighborhoods where we do have a lot of foot traffic. Uh, the fence, um, is primarily restricted to the backyard. He didn't mark this off specifically, so that's something that the planning commission could address. Um, where the, um, where the fence on the east side or west side of the property should end potentially. Um, my understanding was that, he didn't clarify, but, you know, where that shows on the aerial, um, there's like a little, possibly a air conditioning system there. You know, the southwest corner of his house, um, might be a good place to have, um, you know, an, an end to the, the fencing if, you know, if the planning commission decided that it was, um, appropriate. Um, and the only reason I say that is because the, um, that area is not subject to any driveways or, uh, or any entrances or exits onto the street. Um, and then it avoids that kind of corner where the, where the traffic would turn. Um, this is, uh, this is a recommendation to council, and, uh, the, our zoning ordinance does allow an appeal from our fence ordinance. Um, it's not exactly like a variance, um, but similar in that the planning commission should be weighing, um, you know, the benefits versus the potential, um, harm or, uh, safety issues, um, that could arise should the petitioner's, uh, request be granted. Um, do you have any, any additional questions about the circumstances or the layout of the property?
So is the new fence going to go right where the existing picket fence is then? Is that the intent?
Yeah, I understand there's also, there's also chain link in there. So the chain link, I think, goes be- behind the picket. Um, and, uh, yeah, he said he, so his concern when he spoke to me was that if he had to move the fence in and drill new holes and, you know, whatever else goes into fence installation, that, that he might have some issues with his irrigation system. So it's more of a, you know, possibly a matter of convenience, possibly a matter of cost. Um, but that seemed to be his overall concern with, with moving the fence back, the twelve-and-a-half feet. He still has quite a bit of property, um, available, you know, for, uh, for his pets or his dogs, even with the setback. Um, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, I guess I understand trying to ma- make it simple and, uh, replace where the existing fence already exists.
So there's something specifically unique about this property that makes him unable to comply with the setback requirements. Is that correct?
No, I mean, not geographically, only how his irrigation system's been installed, as far as I know.
But he'd be required to irrigate the other side of the fence anyway, right?
Um, you know, that's, that's a good question. I guess I don't know. I, I would assume so he'd irrigate the entire area. But at this point, the, uh, fence goes right up to the sidewalk.
So it's really just an inconvenience for him to follow the, the fence ordinance?
Yeah, and potentially cost. I'm not sure. Does anybody, I don't know if anybody has any experience with, uh, with irrigation systems and, you know, kind of trying to determine where those are located and, you know, I assume there's some cost involved, but, uh, I don't know if it's, uh, just a complete inconvenience. He didn't really say. He just said that was his, that was his issue.
I, I have a question. Is the issue the height of the fence or is the issue the setback?
Um, both. So the, actually, it's, the issue is the permeability of the fence, so the ability to see through it. So if it's a solid fence, we require, require a greater setback than we do for like a chain link or picket, something that's open. So the concern primarily is, uh, visibility, you know, any visual obstructions. That could be an issue for, uh, you know, pedestrians walking by on the sidewalk or for traffic out on the street.
Well, in the traffic in that area, it's close to the fairgrounds. Sixth Avenue, um, pretty much you can drive right into the fairgrounds. So if it's six feet all the way to where that fence is currently, would that be an issue as far as being able to see if you're turning left or right or going straight?
Um, I imagine it could potentially be. I've not gotten any complaints about that property or any requests, uh, regarding any visual obstructions. I mean, you can kind of see where the stop sign is there a little bit. There's a bit of a shadow. Um, so it's, the stop sign would still be in that green area, uh, to the south of the, the, uh, accessible sidewalk entrance. So you're setback a little bit. Um, and yeah, I mean, six feet there would be, probably would be an obstruction. But if the planning commission so desired, they could certainly have the petitioner, you know, end the fence somewhere south of that spot. Um, you know, or deny it completely or, or I guess approve, recommend approval too. But it could be modified to, to require the petitioner to locate the, the six-foot fence again, south of that intersection, um, if safety was a concern.
Um, Holly, I, I want to bring this up now just so I don't forget. This is an open public forum. Um, are there any public there, um, including possibly the homeowner that's interested to address the commission about this?
Um, the petitioner, uh, did seem like he may be interested in attending, but he never responded. Um, and he didn't contact me, uh, to appear in person or, uh, via the web. So he is not present. Um, and there's no one else here, uh, in the room that has indicated, uh, any desire to speak on this issue.
So even on the corner, it would be a solid fence? Not anything that you could see through? Is that what he's saying?
All he told me, he provided, uh, kind of a very basic, uh, application, but, you know, in, in his defense, it's a little hard to connect with people right now, including myself. Um, but we did talk about his, uh, particular situation. Um, and he, but he did not say where exactly the fence would end, um, if he was replacing the entire existing fence, which doesn't make, really make sense to me looking at it. But, um, you know, I would recommend if the planning commission had any interest in approving this, that the, the, the six-foot fencing, uh, be required to maybe, uh, only go as far as the southwest corner of the house. Then in that, or the northwest, it, really, the house is a barrier at that point, you know, visually. So it probably wouldn't make any difference.
Well, technically, wouldn't that be the front yard then? Would ha- would have the greater setback requirement?
Uh, the front yard is, yeah, more, the front yard has, uh, a, a requirement for shorter fence than the back as well. So within that first twenty-five feet, um, it can't be taller than three feet. Um, so yeah, there would be a greater difference in height than what is currently there, which I think it's, uh, which I'm not sure how tall the current fence is. If he has it on here, it's not on here. I would say, looking at it, it looks about maybe five feet. Any other questions or concerns or comments?
Did you say this motion was for a recommendation to council or was just a straight-out review?
Yeah, the fence appeals are recommendation to council. So you can recommend approval, denial, or, or something in between, or approval with conditions.
So, this is Megan Burrows, by the way. Um, I'd make a motion to deny the fence request, so do not recommend this to council. Would that be appropriate?
Yes.
So we have a motion. Um, before we get to any discussion, is there a second on that motion? All right, so that's, the motion's going to die for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion that folks would like to have regarding this?
How about, and this is Jay Lutz. How about if we recommend council to approve the request, provided the opaque fence does not extend beyond the north face of the house?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the fence only to the, um, I, I didn't catch the direction, but basically the corner of the house?
The north corner.
Okay, north corner.
Yeah.
So we have a motion. Is there a second on that one?
I'll second that. Rita Schrock.
Thank you, Rita. Any other discussion that you guys would want to have about this? So right now, we are, uh, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the fence being raised six feet, um, for the backyard up to the north corner of the house.
My only concern with that is are we laying some sort of precedent for future fence appeals for people who are just inconvenienced by the requirements? I mean, essentially, if anybody else is just merely inconvenienced, we're going to have to approve their offensive deal. Maybe that's a question mark for the city attorney.
First and foremost, uh, I think that all of these need to be considered on their individual basis. We certainly look to pass precedence somewhat a- as a guide to say, well, we've done this in these locations because it made sense. Does the same argument apply here? Uh, if you keep in mind that the opaque fence height requirement and location requirement setbacks on a corner lot are principally aimed at public safety, pedestrian, vehicle traffic. If you recall, some of the other times when we've considered opaque fences on corner lots, there have been side driveways, and the concern was that a car might be backing out, and a pedestrian might be walking by the fence, and there would be a lack of visibility between those two moving, uh, you know, uh, things and, and it create, create a conflict. I think that you're zeroing in very appropriately on the front yard. There would be some different rules in the front yard, but the visibility at the corner would be very important to preserve and to be worried about. Uh, this particular property has a north-facing garage with a north-facing driveway presently. And so if the fence were in the backyard area, what I would call, um, there wouldn't be conflicts between pedestrians and vehicle traffic anywhere. I note that the property to the south, uh, their driveway is on the southern part of their property, so quite a distance between the fence and the neighbor's driveway that would provide visibility for any pedestrians on the sidewalk, for any cars either driving on the road or backing out of that car, that house's driveway. So, you know, the appeal process for fences and signs is somewhat like a variance, but is not a- as strictly enforced as a variance. Uh, and the idea behind the allowing for appeals is to say, we have a general rule that serves a public safety, uh, purpose. Does that public safety purpose impact this property in a way that's different? And so you could determine that because there's a lack of any driveway access going off the side yard, there's a lack of neighboring driveways in the nearby vicinity, that you don't foresee conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. And you could say that if the fence terminates somewhere where there would have been a visibility sightline problem anyway, you're not creating problems at the corner. You could make that determination. You could also say that the rule is, uh, fences have to be set back, and, uh, you don't see anything about this property that would suggest that it should be treated differently.
I, I think for me, I've, I've been on this commission long enough that I've seen and voted both for and against different fence appeals. Um, and it generally comes down to two things for me. One, height, is it above what would ever be allowed? And in this case, we do allow six-foot fences. It's just more the setback that's the issue. And then the much bigger one for me is sort of what, uh, Mr. Byram was alluding to, is visibility. Um, and so for me, I think as long as this was contained to the back and side yard, and there are no driveways that kind of butt up to that, I could be convinced that this would be an appropriate sign appeal to approve. Anyone else want to weigh in before we take a roll call vote on the motion? All right, Erica, will you take us through a roll call vote?
Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Caporal?
Aye.
Postma?
Aye.
Schrock?
Aye.
Burrows?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Um, this is a recommendation to council, so it will be on their agenda. Anything else on this one, Holly, or should we continue on?
No, we can continue to the next matter. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, this one, uh, there is, uh, parcel that we're familiar with. We talked about a few months ago. Uh, the owner has come back and is looking for a, uh, proposal to change from a single-family residential district to a planned business district. Um, and this is a little more complicated, so I'm going to let Holly talk even sooner.
So I kind of went a little back and forth on whether this should be called a planned business district or a planned residential district. So we actually decided to go with planned development residential. Um, there are a couple more edits in here as we go along, but this, the petitioner is Curtis Sorenson. Um, as you noted, he has come before the planning commission and council previously for a rezone of the property to allow a commercial, uh, car sales lot um, at the, uh, fifteen-hundred-seventh Avenue Northwest location. Um, it's actually primarily, the, the majority of the lot faces, uh, Fourteenth Street. Um, the, uh, the planning commission recommended, uh, denial of the rezone request. Um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but primarily, it was just that a, a B-two district kind of opens up an area to a lot more uses than what, um, would be considered, uh, reasonable for that location. Um, so I have here the surrounding land use. There's an area where it says commercial, but it's actually, the whole area is residential, except for that one location where there had previously been a commercial, uh, a lot, lot use there, um, from various businesses, typically small, um, construction or, or automotive-type uses. Um, the, just to refresh everybody's memory, it had, it was basically a lapsed non-conforming use. Um, so there's no ongoing car lot use there without some kind of additional action, um, from a planning perspective. Um, without the rezone, the, um, the opportunity or option of a planned unit development was suggested. Um, the, um, the planned development, uh, is preliminary, or is primarily an overlay of the existing district. So, um, the underlying zoning district would remain, um, residential. And, um, the addition of a planned development on that location would allow some flexibility within that district. And I have, I have that in the staff considerations, but it wasn't written quite how I wanted it to be. Um, and that was me, just, uh, going to blame it on my mouse because it's not working with my computer very well. But, um, automotive sales, uh, are typically not allowed in R-one districts, as you all probably know. Um, the underlying zoning of the planned development applies, uh, residential requirements, um, to a commercial use in this instance, which creates that conflict, um, primarily with regard to setbacks and with general uses allowed in that underlying district. Um, the use of the, if the, if the use was, of the underlying use was commercial, there would still be some conflicts. If we had talked about during the rezone request that there would have to still be a conditional use permit and possibly a variance, um, if that would have been successful. Um, with the planned development, um, the property, um, could be zoned in a way which would allow a half conflict here, but which would allow flexibility um, with the underlying zoning. Um, and then I included the, the principal permitted uses here in a planned development. It, I did copy the entire ordinance for your review because it's, it's kind of, um, it's very involved. It's, um, sort of contemplates something similar to a subdivision, um, potentially, although we've done some very small projects as planned developments, which I've included some examples. Um, but it can include a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Um, the extent of each use is determined by the type of planned development district proposed. Um, uses other than that, the typical principle type, um, are, are allowed but not, cannot result in undue adverse effect on the surrounding areas. And, um, and then must be consistent with the intent of the chapter and the concept of the proposed planned development district. The petitioner did include a concept plan, um, for you to review. Uh, it doesn't change the structure, to the best of my knowledge. Uh, you can correct, the petitioner is here. We'll wait for a moment until I get through this to ask questions. But, um, he gave a small, or a short description of, um, how he intends to use the property and how he intends to improve it and mitigate some of the issues that were, um, brought up during the rezone petition. Um, and then there's a, there's a drawing, um, kind of showing the, the, uh, dimensions of that area and where, um, some of the parking and snow, um, garbage removal, those kinds of things would be dealt with. And then I just included some photographs, um, so you could see kind of what it looks like right now. Um, and- And for comparison, I included three previous projects that we've done. And I don't know if any of you were here for any of these projects, but Torgies created a planned use development business to combine their whole area that they own into sort of one community, common interest community. So they have an agreement that applies to all of their common spaces and how they will manage that property. And the idea was to convert some of their parking area into a structure, which they had proposed a hotel. However, at this point, that has not gone forward. So if in the future they wanted to do something there, they may have to amend their planned development proposal. And the same would be applicable here. Anything outside of what's approved would have to be amended if it was anything substantial. Another, another project before my time, but Mr. Byram's familiar with it, was Burr Oak. That was created to allow conversion of a care facility into apartments. The underlying zone there is residential. And then Carriage Homes, which is in the southwest, was created to allow greater housing density than what's normally allowed in our one zone. And in that zone, the underlying zoning is residential. I did get a couple of comments from the public. There are two members of the public here who will be able to speak if they so desire. And then I had a call from the neighbors, Thyssen. They're the ones that own the home in the photograph. That's the closest to this business. So the one with the red roof in your materials. They, I explained to them basically that, you know, planned unit development would be specific to this particular concept and proposed plan. So, you know, it wouldn't open the property up to any use. You know, it would be very specific, again, specific as laid out in this plan. And that the, if the property was sold in the future, you know, if anybody came in, they would either have to follow the same concept plan or they would have to develop a new plan or try to rezone the property or, you know, whatever, whatever other options are available, depending on what they were proposing to use the property for. I think, I think that's all that I, so this is just a, so just to note that, I have that in here too. The, so unlike other rezones, a preliminary plan is submitted for, for a planned development in a manner similar to that of a subdivision. So upon tentative approval of the preliminary plan, which that's what this is, the final, the applicant will submit a final plan, which will be approved by resolution. The final approved plan, along with any conditions or restrictions imposed, if any, will control the use and development of the property. Here, we don't need to replat because the action affects existing lots and areas that have already, already have infrastructure. However, the petitioner has agreed to combine the two lots 'cause right now they're, they're separate. Should he receive approval for the planned development? And then that planned development would encompass that area, that whole area.
Can I ask Mr. Byram to chime in? Because I believe the idea, I believe he was the one who originally brought up the PUD, but that was actually brought up, if I recall, at a city council meeting after the planning commission had talked about it. So folks might not be as familiar with the PUD concept. Can you sort of talk us through how that's different than what we're used to looking at here?
Sure. So the, the, the normal zoning classifications that we look at in almost all cases are various types of residential zones, various types of commercial zones, or various types of industrial zones. And each of those has specifically listed permitted uses and conditional uses. And anything that's not permitted or conditional is not allowed in those types of zoning classifications. So here, we have a piece of property that's zoned for single-family, but has historically been used for a very long time as either a construction-type business plumbing or roofing or other types of construction, or for car sales. And so that use was allowed as a non-conforming use until it was essentially abandoned for 12 months or more, when that non-conforming use then expired, forcing the property owner to either develop this as single-family residential or to seek a new zoning classification or some new permission to do something commercial on this location. When the proposal was brought forward to reclassify it as B2, which is the only zoning classification that we allow car dealerships to be in, it was noted that B2 also has a long list of other permitted uses that would be more offensive if they were allowed at this location. It was also noted that B2 is generally areas like 18th Avenue where it's intensely commercial and, and allows for, you know, large-scale car lots, which is quite a bit different than what we're looking at here, perhaps. The comments made at the planning commission when the rezoning was denied was that the planning commission might be more amenable to, to a request if it could guarantee that only a small-scale car dealership would be allowed. And that part of the reason why it was denied was that the concern was a broad-based rezoning would not limit it to a small-scale car lot, but would allow a lot of other things. Similar comments were made at the city council meeting when they also denied the rezoning. And at that time, I mentioned that one option is to use what's called a planned development. It's not used very often, but a planned development, if you look at our ordinance, says that the intent of a planned development is to encourage developers to use more creative or imaginative approaches in development and renewal of residential, commercial, or industrial areas, or to provide an enjoyable living environment by preserving existing features, or to provide a compatible and stable environment in harmony with the surrounding area. Generally, when we look at the examples of times when we have used a planned development in Austin, it has been a, sometimes a particular parcel of land that is challenging to make it work or fit in our regular zoning process. And so I'm not advocating for this, but there were comments made before that 14th Street Northwest is a very busy thoroughfare, that this lot may be too small or too long or too narrow or too something to ever allow for single-family development that has historically been business in nature. And so there was some discussion about whether this piece of property is sort of uniquely difficult to develop in its current state in a single-family residential manner. And so the thought was, could we do something else with it? A planned development is a very strange system within our zoning code that basically says, look, when you have a problem that can't be resolved, one of your options is to say, let's sort of write a new zoning code just for this property. Because there's something about this property that makes it hard to fit in the normal rules. Let's make a new set of rules that might govern just this property. And so we can allow or restrict or define uses that aren't allowed in other zoning classifications. Or we could allow mixed uses that wouldn't normally be allowed next door to each other, but we may make a decision that in this instance, they would make sense. Or we could treat it somewhat like a conditional use permit where we say, well, we're gonna allow this defined restricted use, but only if we control screening to the neighboring properties, the way the lights are configured, the way the parking happens. You know, we put a bunch of rules on how that use can be done. And then the property sort of lives under that set of rules that only apply to that property. So it is, it's a balance between giving flexibility to the landowner while also giving the government a lot more control than would, would generally happen if this were, say, a B2 zoning parcel. So it, it may be seen as the right balancing between recognizing that the property is hard to develop residential versus allowing it to be used for some productive fashion, balanced against protecting the neighbors from the, you know, problems associated with a car dealership being located next door, be that noise, vibration, smells, lights, garbage, off-street parking, those sorts of considerations. So at this stage, the question before you really is, is this something worth exploring? The preliminary stage or the, the concept stage is really a question of, are we wasting time? So if you believe that if the plan comes back at the next meeting with the details that are necessary to pass a planned development, you would be inclined to consider it favorably, then you're telling this applicant, go ahead and spend the time developing the preliminary plan. If, on the other hand, you're saying tonight, we've considered this and we just still feel uncomfortable with a car dealership at this location. Car dealerships are placed in other zoning classifications for a reason. We would prefer to see this property developed as a residential property. Then now you say to the person, don't waste your time doing the preliminary plan. We're just gonna tell you tonight that we don't like the concept. When the preliminary plan comes back, it will have been reviewed by various departments, utilities and streets and logistics and Holly's office to try to come up with all of the restrictions and rules that would apply if this is approved in order to protect the neighbors from this use.
Just one correction, you're referring to the final plan.
Yeah, well, one of the options and we'd have to face that at the next meeting is that we have a preliminary and a final. It depends on whether it's complicated or not. But yes, there would, like a, like a plat or a subdivision, there are multiple reviews. So tonight's just really, is the concept something that you're warm enough to, to want to see more detail? And do you want Mr. Sorenson or whoever he's working with to put together the more detailed plan to take a look at?
All right. Thank you for that detailed explanation. I think I know for myself that helped. I see Mr. Sorenson's been waiting to speak with us for a little bit. So if you would like, state your name and address and then I address the commission, that'd be great.
Curtis Sorenson, 303 27th Drive Northwest. I think that was a perfect outline of exactly what has brought us here today. Everyone has kind of been in agreeance of exactly what was explained. In a whole, the commercial B2 zoning is such a large zoning. You know, I'm looking to do is get my zoning sheet signed so I can have a car lot. You know, and this PUD, Mayor's exact words, where this pigeon holds it right down. We can control how you operate business and what you can do and what you can't do there, which I think is exactly what we were all looking for. Hopefully I have all of your support in this. We can come back, as Mr. Byram said, with more details and move forward to doing some business.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Is there anything that I can answer, anything that's not laid out? I have one question because I think I remember the answer when you were here previously. Are you the owner of the lot? Or are you in talks with somebody to own the lot at some point if this goes through?
I purchased this already from Mr. Medgarden. I believe we signed paperwork, August or September last year. So I've purchased insurance for the whole year, a bond, done everything. Just been sitting, waiting. Mr. Medgarden has been very good with me, working with me on, you know, the cost of the property. So we've just been hanging out. Last time I had a meeting that I was before the council, they specifically asked, will you bring this back if we, you know, try this PUD? And I'm here, let's, let's get it going.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Sorenson?
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're asking to rezone this to PD residential. This is a single, approximately 15,000 square foot parcel that sits in the middle of a residential area. It's looking at the pictures. It's essentially all asphalt and concrete. The only building is a garage with office space above, which is essentially a commercial building. What aspect, what characteristics of this planned development make it in any way a planned development that's residential?
Well, I know it's zoned residential, but we have multiple properties right around it that operate in, you know, you have the new QuickTrip right there, Key West Apartments, the college. I mean, it's, it's so close and it's such a weird property. As Mr. Byram said, what, what else do we do with it? It's almost impossible to develop it into residential. The non-conforming use that went away is honestly a shame. I don't, I don't see anything other that you could do with the property. And I completely understand zoning commission, council, everybody being concerned with what you could do for, with this property. You know, the car lot that it was for, since, I think it was 1989 it was granted, somewhere around there. It might have been 98, switched the numbers. But it was granted a non-conforming use for a car lot forever. And I don't, I, I was shocked to find out it was residential. I spoke to many people in the community about this and everyone is shocked that it's residential. I mean, I look at the property, we all drive by it, we all live here, we see it all the time. It is obviously not even close to looking like a residential property. As you said, it's concrete and asphalt and a small office building with a garage door. Looks like a commercial lot to me.
That's, that's what I'm asking. How do, how do you arrive at, at planned development residential when the intent is to put a business there? I don't understand how that's an appropriate use of the zoning.
I knew nothing about it. It was recommended by Mr. Byram at the last city council meeting we were at. He, we actually had one city council meeting, they voted for this, but it wasn't the majority, so we came back the second time. And Mr. Byram had this option for everyone to consider. And all of council was like, well, hey, this is what we're looking for. This is the solution. We can control what you do there. They all said, you know, a car lot is good, but we don't want everything else. So specifically said, if you, if we turn this down today, will you bring this back with this PUD application? So I'm not extremely familiar with it. I have it here, I've read through it, Holly's explained it to me. I'm doing the best I can with all the legalities of it. But it was, I knew nothing about it, Mr. Byram recommended it. Here we are, trying to get things going.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Is that a question more for maybe Ms. Wallace or Mr. Byram? Which is, I'm reading through this and it says we can designate it residential PDR, commercial PDB. What is the difference between those two designations? And why isn't this a request for a PDB?
So I'll quick go first. So I chose, initially I chose PDB because the use is commercial. But ultimately, our ordinance instructs us to designate the planned development based on the primary underlying zoning. So we're calling it a planned development residential, although I've shared with Mr. Byram the portion of our ordinance that allows a difference between the use. So under principal permitted uses that we have in each zoning district, there's a description, and I'll just hand it off to Mr. Byram.
Yeah, so one of the problems with the labels is that they can create confusion unintentionally. The designation as a planned development residential really comes from the language in the ordinance that says that the type of planned development is designated based upon is designated based upon what the underlying zoning in the area would normally be or what would be expected before you do this. And since this is a residential area, we call it a PDR because it's in the residential area. It's, perhaps the only real importance of it is, is that it's an indication that if this planned development fails, the long-term intention would be that this continue to be as residential as possible so that it fits with the neighbors. So if this property were located in a more business environment, more, more business oriented part of town, we would call it a planned development business, PDB, simply to say, yes, we think the long-term business is good in this area. So if this development fails, the intent would be to revert back to something at least business oriented. So it was more of a staff decision than Mr. Sorenson's decision on whether to call it a planned development residential or planned development business. Either way, the, the ordinance really doesn't treat them differently as far as how we approach the design of the planned development itself. We look in subdivision three, principal permitted uses. So this describes what kinds of uses could be put into a planned development in a residential area. And it says, a planned development may include a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial uses or any combination thereof. The extent of each use shall be determined by the planned development district proposed. So essentially, we can limit, define, locate, describe the uses that we're going to allow on this property in a way that's completely unique to this property. And that's where I fall back to. If you're going to proceed with this, the description would be, we will allow a small-scale auto sales, no auto servicing, no bodywork business to be located with cars, only located as Mr. Sorenson describes in his plan or as we, you know, maybe fine tune that before we get to the final hearing on this. But we're defining the types of services he can provide, the locations that they're provided, the locations where the cars are to be shown for sale, the, where the customers can park. We can define all of that as part of a planned development and we wouldn't be able to do much of that in other contexts. So while we call it planned development dash R, that doesn't mean that the planned development's intended to only have residential uses. We are falling back on the permitted use that says we can define what mixture of uses we feel is appropriate at that location. And again, I want to make it clear for the record, you can decide that that use is not even compatible in this area and deny this request. But if you proceed, you can lock that down, define that and, and control that very specifically in a planned development context.
Were there other questions for Mr. Sorenson? I know we have a couple other folks in the room who want to speak up, so we'll get to you. Thank you for your patience. I want to see if any commissioners have any other questions for Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate, I know this has been a long battle. It's been a lot of meetings, a lot of time. But I appreciate trying to figure out a solution for me here.
All right. Holly, can you introduce whoever would like to speak up at the public hearing there, please?
Do we, do either of you who are here want to? Okay, okay. We just have one individual, Mr. Helmers, and he, he will introduce himself. I actually, do we have, we have an extra microphone? Hang on, so you don't have to share. Hang on. Just the bottom is the, to turn it on. Just push the bottom, right here. Just hold it for a second? Nope, just hold it until the green light goes on?
Okay. Hello. Yes, hi. I'm Robert Helmers and I own the property that's adjacent to the car lot. Now, on the north side of the front car lot there, it's 150-foot lot by 45-foot in depth. And I also own the property adjacent to that lot, which is 150 feet by 45 foot. So if Mr. Sorenson gets that rezoned for a used car lot, which is fine with me, but all I ask is that the property that I own, I want to have a display lot with only six cars on it there. And that's what I would want. And because like I say, I went in front of the council different times. You can check the records way back and tried to get it put back to commercial and I could never get that done. And they said they would never allow a commercial lot back there again, is what I was always told. And they said if the use permit expired over a year, that car lot would never be there again, is what I was always told. But now, you know, you do want to put a car lot back in there. That's fine with me, but I just want to make sure then I have rights on my adjacent lot. That's also a vacant lot, just like their front lot is. And I would like to have only six cars there, just on display only. And so that's what I would want. And so whatever I have to do to do that, you know, I would like to have that done at the same time. And because the thing is, is this, if you take a look, there's other situations. Let's look at Ford Garage. They had a piece of real estate beside of there that was multi-dwelling. It was apartment house setup. And they rezoned it to commercial to have a used car lot there. So they got another, so they got another used car lot, Shade Tree Mortars, which is right beside it. And then if you take a look at Southwest Sales, Glenn Medgarden's place, when he originally bought that gas station down there, then he turned around and bought a residential property behind the property and they rezoned it to commercial. And then the same thing again up at the A&W Rupbear Stand. Used to be an R2 property. They added land to it to the north and they respawned zone it commercial. So it isn't like, you know, there's, these things happen where you change zoning, you know, because it's, you know, happen in different situations. So anyway, that's all I got to say for now.
Thanks for taking the time to address us. I do want to just make clear that whatever actions we take today are just on the subject property in front of us, you'd be able to seek out a PUD for your property, going through the same steps Mr. Sorenson is, and it would be subject to its own approval independent of whatever we do today.
I don't see, I don't think I have anybody else here that wishes to comment.
All right. Then commissioners, I'll open it up to discussion and thoughts.
Maybe to help you get started, this would also be a recommendation to council.
I, I know for me, one of the things that I'm struggling with when I looked at Holly's examples of the previous PUDs, they have generally been changes that have still been within the same category. So for instance, changing a long-term care facility to apartments was still some version of residential to residential. Torghese was previously commercial and adding another hotel would certainly be the same thing. I am really struggling with the idea of putting a commercial thing in the middle of the sea of residential. Because in general, our goal is always to take things from non-conforming and get them towards conforming. And this would be sort of taking a step backwards where it is currently residential and going towards something that is not residential. That's, that's probably my biggest hang-up on this project right now.
Holly, can you remind us what the comprehensive plan had this as?
The comprehensive, the comprehensive plan indicates that area as single-family residential and that's what it's zoned as. We didn't change it when we updated our comprehensive plan. But so when we did get the rezone request, we were also asking to amend the future land use map. If you recall, I don't know if you recall, but... In this instance, though, that would not be necessary if we were doing the planned development.
There is some bad feedback or something, so I missed most of that. Did, the comp plan had it as residential?
The comp, can you hear me better now? Is this okay? Oh, I have the other microphone here. That's why. When, when Mr. Sorenson brought the original rezone request, we also asked to amend the future land use map because it does also indicate that area is residential. And we adopted that comprehensive plan in 2016. So not too long ago. Just, so yeah, in this instance, though, we wouldn't have to rezone if we did do a planned development. Does that, can you hear me better? Does that sound better?
It was breaking up a little bit. I don't know.
I think actually the, the little yellow boxes on the Zoom call, I think it might have been feedback from somebody else. So maybe we can make sure we're muted and it could be me, but I'll make sure to mute myself if I'm not actually talking.
Do you want me to say it one more time? I can. So when, when the petitioner brought his original rezone request, he, we also asked to, we also asked to amend the future land use plan. The future land use plan does indicate this area as residential. The, the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2016. But in this instance, we would not have to amend the future land use plan. The underlying zoning would remain residential. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions for me or Mr. Byram or?
I have a question. So what we're looking at is potentially approving him for a next step to create a plan to come back to us with that we would give final approval on at that time?
Yes, if you recommend approval of the concept and the city council approves the concept, then we move to the preliminary plan stage, which has 24 specific criteria for information that the applicant would have to provide, which is more detail about exact dimensions, exterior lighting plan, landscaping plan, little bit more detail on off-street parking, things of that nature that would go into a preliminary plan. If, since this is under two acres in lot area and maybe deemed to be simple enough, we might choose to collapse the final and the preliminary into a single hearing. But if, if there were issues with the preliminary plan, there's always in, in the ordinance, a third stage called the final plan. So the preliminary plan will be reviewed and comments and feedback. And this might work if, but you have to change A, B, and C and then you send the applicant back to make those changes before final approval. But yes, this is concept, next stage, 24 specific items and any other detail that Holly or I or anyone else wants to ask the applicant to fill in the blanks on before you make the next decision.
And the PDR, would that expire then when he sold the property? Or if he changed businesses on the same parcel?
So the planned development, if it's ultimately approved, the property is essentially zoned now as a planned development, as this unique planned development. The property then can only be developed and used and occupied and, you know, structures and what have you, consistent with that plan associated with the planned development. If in the future, there's a desire to change, hey, the car lot's not working out. Instead, we want to go back and now rent it out as a, as a roofing business or something like that. They would have to come back because that would not be part of this planned development.
I did have a question, something that I just kind of dawned on me as we're talking here. So we talked about fences and offsets. I didn't even look into this because it just doesn't make much sense. We're looking at a property that's 51 feet deep. That includes nine feet, or no, 5.5 feet of the sidewalk plus the boulevard. So if you were to develop this into a single dwelling unit, what is the offset on building a house? It's got to be at least 10, 12 feet or something. So we've got our five and a half feet of sidewalk that's already there, our three feet of boulevard. We're already nine feet off of 51. That doesn't leave any room. Say you have a 10, 12 feet offset, you don't even have room to put a house there. So that's where I always keep coming back to looking at this property and what is there to do with it besides what's there?
Yeah, typically in those-
Can you just make grass? I mean, offsets alone is going to make it almost impossible to put a house or a structure there.
Yeah, typically in those situations, there would be multiple acquisitions of property to do some kind of multifamily housing or a quad or something like that. There would be some demo involved. I mean, potentially it could be some addition to the existing properties. I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, there are just, you know, dozens of things that-
So we'd be in the same position we're at now. Trying to figure out a way to work the system, to figure out a development plan or purchase more properties just to try and develop a piece of property and a piece of land that is already set up for what we want to do, that you can completely control how I run the business, what I do there, what I put there, what I can and can't do. And again, this is only preliminary. We can go into all those details and say, you can do this, you can't do that. So even if someone were to develop into a home, purchase multiple lots, there's going to be multiple planning and zoning meetings, multiple things that have to happen just like what we're doing, where we're trying to figure out a way to make it work when we're already at it now for an existing building, a property that's there.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, it's just speculative.
I will say for myself, I do understand this is a multi-stage process. I certainly don't want to send Mr. Sorenson on a goose chase, spending time and money going through, I think I heard, 24 different criteria only to decide for me that I wouldn't want to have a car lot here. So I'm trying to make sure that whatever I do, whatever decision I lean towards here, I'd be consistent going towards, because I don't want to waste his time on that. So I think we're all sort of, yeah.
I couldn't agree more. If this is something that we ultimately in the end are not going to want to do, because I need you guys on board with this as much as I need city council. Sorry, you know, it doesn't matter if you guys say no and they say yes. In the end, we all need to work together if we're going to make this work. And if it's just not going to work, please tell me now.
Any other thoughts from the commissioners? Anyone reached a point where they'd like to entertain making a motion?
So this would be a recommendation to council to, uh, approve or deny or approve with conditions the concept plan that is in front of us. And as Commissioner Postma noted, I mean, that will start the ball rolling, I guess, in whichever direction, uh, you choose.
I, listen, I've driven through, down that property, you know, down that street multiple times. I kind of agree with Curtis. What else are we going to do with that property? I mean, come on, it's built to be a car lot at this point. Let's give him the opportunity to come back to us with a plan, to make, make it a car lot. Let's, let's have him get his car lot. So Holly, I would motion to approve what you just said. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear exactly the words, terminologies that it's used. So if you want to repeat that, I will have a motion to approve.
Um, he's presented a concept plan?
Yes. I motion to... I motion, Jonathan Caprell, motion to approve Curtis to get a concept... For a, I'm sorry, Holly.
That's okay. So it's a, he's currently proposed a concept. He's, uh, provided a plan. Um, so it would just be approving the current concept plan in front of you or making a recommendation to council to approve the concept plan that he has presented, uh, to, um, for a plan development, um, in the location designated.
Motion to approve the concept plan that he has laid out. This is Jonathan Caprell.
Thanks, Jonathan. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, so we'll move on to some, a little bit more discussion. I did have one question that just popped up for myself. Holly, did you hear any other feedback when you sent out the letters to the neighbors regarding this?
Uh, yeah, so I started talking about it a little bit, how I, um, described this particular type of zoning to the Thecans, who are the property owners, uh, to the southwest of the loc, that prop, uh, of the former autos, auto sales. They had appeared at the last meeting, um, to object to the property being used as a car si, car lot. Um, they, in this instance, said, you know, if, if they could have the restrictions and continue with the, the zoning remaining, um, residential, that they, you know, they felt they could wait it out. You know, they felt like, you know, maybe, maybe it won't be there forever, but if it, if it is, they could potentially tolerate it. They, it's been there for many years and that, you know, they hoped that Mr. Sorenson would be good neighbor and that they would, you know, presumably find out if, if the, uh, concept plan was approved. So that was the comments that I got from them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't get any other comments from the public, uh, outside of this, uh, public meeting. Yeah, they've, they've been very clear that they did not, uh, enjoy having a property, uh, near their, the auto sales. And I, I don't know if that was partly, you know, with regard to ownership. You know, I mean, so it's just, uh, you know, maybe it's a neighbor issue, but maybe it's also a use issue, so I, but they didn't really, they didn't really clarify that. And Mr. Medgarden's kind of commenting a little bit to me here, but, um, which has driven some of my additional comments. But, but that's, that's basically what I've, uh, learned from them.
Holly, Holly, we can't really hear, so if somebody'd like to-
Yeah, Mr. Medgarden, do you, do you want to make some comments or officially or?
I can if you want me to.
It's- Oh, okay. Yeah, it's not necessary, but I, I have a mask if you're comfortable with.
I'm Glenn Medgarden. I live out on the northeast edge of Austin. I've owned the property for the last several years. Uh, I did mend it to a hail chaser, a storm chaser for a while for the roofing company, uh, Timberline Roofing, but he's just, uh, rounded it till the hail damage was repaired, and then he, then he wanted out. So I sold it to Kurt, and I did not realize that the zoning would revert, otherwise I'd park some cars on there myself. But Thecans are against, because previously they had some trouble with the guys that were in there. I have had no problem with them. I even let them park a truck in there, and they removed a tree out of their backyard. And I did repair the, uh, there's a kind of a cement berm on the south side there between their property and my property. I even repaired that satisfactorily to them. So I get along good with them. But I don't think Austin needs any more empty buildings. We've got an abundance of them right now. You drive out on, through County Road Forty-five through Mapleville, you got, uh, I don't know how many you got out there. Special K is empty and, or Double K, I mean, empty and several other ones. So I think this would be a good opportunity for that. This has been a car lot for probably thirty, thirty-five years. Prior to that, it was a car club, I think it was a Thumpers or something like that. Had a, had a car lot, or I mean, a, a car club in there. They had a, the Polish parlor, they clean, the parlor, they cleaned cars and stuff. So that lot had been primarily something to do with automotive for the last fifty years or more.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a few more comments, um, regarding the Thecans. I actually did knock about fifty-some doors. Some I didn't find homes, some didn't speak English, but I did acquire over thirty signatures of neighbors, um, that were okay with it being zoned to a car lot, um, which the PUD application makes it. It can only be that. So it takes away the commercial aspect of that as well. Um, but I met the Thecans. I've talked to them. I've built some rapport with them. I've addressed their concerns. The beauty of the PUD application is, as you can see, my concept plan, one of their complaints, um, they only had a few. They, they had some issues with the neighbor, but they really didn't like large vehicles on the corner. So obviously something that I would invite them to be involved in the PUD application and be involved in the meetings, so I can be a good neighbor to them. Um, we talk about vacant buildings and, you know, we all read the paper and see things that happen. Things, bad things happen at vacant buildings all the time. If I were them, I would like to see a good business owner running a, a business properly rather than a vacant rundown building next to my property. Um, I also look back at the fact of, like, uh, Holly said, they were hoping to wait it out. There was a business there when they bought their house. But yeah, I've talked with them, spoke with them, addressed their concerns, would love to have them involved in the planning of this, so that, you know, we can be good neighbors.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from any of the other commissioners? All right, I guess I will say for myself, I think this has probably been, um, maybe the hardest one that I've had to look at since we've been on this, since I've been on this board. I definitely see both sides, uh, and I appreciate all the work that's gone in by Mr. Sorenson and all of the city staff in trying to find something that makes sense for everyone. So as a reminder, we're about to take a vote as to whether to approve recommending this to go to city council, and I will let Erica take the roll call vote.
Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Nay.
Commissioner Caprell?
Aye.
Commissioner Postma?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, Mr. Sorenson, you're on to the city council, and Holly will let you know when that is. Thank you for your patience and your due diligence.
Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, both matters will be at the next council meeting, uh, next Monday.
Thank you very much.
That will be for the council to approve whether or not for him to go forward with the plan, right?
It's the same concept, approval.
Right, there'll just be some additional work with the decision.
Okay, go, go ahead.
I'm not sure if there's some talking. I'm not, I'm not, what's going on in the chambers, so...
Holly, do you have anything else for us?
I don't think so. I would just announce that we are still working on the update of our zoning and subdivision ordinances, which I will provide you guys some documents once we get some drafts, um, for you to review. And I'm sure after going through these kinds of really difficult, um, uh, you know, planning questions or land use questions, um, that you'll just, you'll be ready to go. So that's it.
All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Lutz, second from Caprell. Uh, do we need a roll call vote for this one? Yeah, all right, take it away.
Aye.
Swenson? Aye.
Lutz?
Aye.
Caprell?
Aye.
Postma?
Aye.
Quack?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you all. Um, you can go. You can get out of here.